Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to call the Bonita Springs Fire Control and Rescue District, regular board meeting Monday, October 14, 2019, to order. Please rise for an invocation followed by the pledge.
I'd like to have a moment of silence for five firefighters that have lost their lives this past month. Also, Commissioner Slackta is in the hospital, could use our prayers. Let's remember him also. Dear God, we come to you tonight, and we thank you for literally the thousands and thousands of men and women who serve as firefighters across this country. And each month, we stop to pause those who have lost their life and duty, and we thank you for their sacrifice, and we pray that you will be with their families during this time of loss, that you will strengthen them. Pray also be with Commissioner Slackta, that you will just bless him and watch over him. And Lord, we ask you to protect our firefighters here in Bonita, that you will just surround them with your care and watch over them always. It's in Christ's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments on agenda items this evening? I have no slips. Anybody have anything? Seeing none. First item, I need a motion to approve the executive session minutes from August 12, 2019.
Second on that, please.
Absolutely.
That's August 12?
August 12. I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion. I'd like to make a correction.
Okay, discussion.
If I may.
Absolutely.
Second paragraph, Article 18 regarding wages, was discussed extensively. That is correct. The rest is just discussion, superfluous, and I ask that the remaining paragraph be stricken to the end of the minutes.
So noted. Anybody else?
I had a correction beyond that, but he's covered that, so.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Staff got the changes on that?
Yep. Yes, sir.
Same thing for August 23, 2019, executive session minutes. Need a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, discussion. And the last paragraph regarding Article 18, it says Chief Daigle proposed, well, we were all polled individually. And I was the first polled, and I came up with the three, three, and three, and everybody followed suit. But not the, I'm looking for accolades, but I was the one that proposed it, not the chief.
I recall that.
So noted.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you want that to state instead of Chief Daigle, Vice Chairman Lohan, I mean, Casilla?
Yes.
Did you vote? Yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. September 9, 2019, tentative millage and tentative budget hearing minutes. I need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. September 9, 2019, regular meeting minutes. Motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. September 24, 2019, final millage and final budget hearing minutes. Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approval of September 2019 financials, current expenditures and ACH payments, acknowledgement of financial report, acknowledgement of wire transfers and transfers between accounts.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
I have a discussion.
Discussion?
Yes, I was not able to see the budgeted purchase order of $10,000. I haven't seen that yet.
I didn't put, is that, that's a separate motion, isn't it, or is that, should be all under the one?
It can be, it can be a separate motion.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't include that in that, because I just assumed that it would be a separate motion.
And to talk about, there's questions.
Okay. So let's, we'll move that. We okay with what we've got?
We just need to finish our vote then.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item is the approval of the budgeted purchase order over $10,000. I did some checking on that on my own, but it should, I get a file error on that when it came up.
Okay. All right. If you'd like to talk about it, did you see what it is?
Yeah, I see it.
I need a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, presentations.
Yeah, the first presentation we have is for Fire Inspector Worth Anderson. He's been here five years now. Just a little background, he came to us from the Florida Fire Systems. He used to do the fire systems out there. We advertised for a position, and he came, came in and applied for it, and we hired him. Worth holds a bachelor degree in fire science, and he also holds an associate degree in drafting and design. So he comes to us very qualified. He's been a great asset to the fire prevention division. He's right now, you know, our head guy that goes out and does all new construction. So with his background, I think he's a very valuable person, and I'd like to congratulate him on five years of being here. Worth?
Want to stand on my chair?
If I may, sir, I'd like, with the Fire Marshal Washburn, if she'd like to say a few words about Worth. I know she's only been here for a couple of months now, but if she'd like to say anything.
Absolutely.
And I'd also like to kind of say, you know, Worth is well-respected in his field and in his division. If you notice, most of his, if not every one of his work partners are here to support him for his five-year tenure. So that leans a little bit to what Worth brings to the field.
Well, as a personal aside here, usually when the public talks to me, it's what a bunch of boneheads you guys are, because they didn't get permits, okay? And I will say that I regularly get accolades for you, so congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, if I might add, recently I called the fire marshal and asked for some assistance in my community, and Worth was directed my way, and he came in, he did an outstanding job, really gave us a good idea where we stood as a community and what we needed to do, and I'm very proud of having him with us. Thank you.
Amen.
I'd also like to add something. Many of you may not realize this, but most fire prevention offices throughout the state, they may only have certified fire inspectors that work under them. And if they're, in addition to certified firefighters, which we have a few, it's very rare to have fire inspectors that were also a contractor. So this is, Worth is part of my dream team, and he's doing an excellent job, and he's the go-to person in our office. And as the commissioner stated, he really does help us out. So I'm very proud to have him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Worth.
Next on, next on our list for presentations is the Phoenix Award. I'm going to turn that over to Deputy Chief Scott.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So again, it's our privilege to honor some emergency responders this afternoon for two Phoenix Awards. So just to review, if you haven't seen this presentation before, what a Phoenix Award is. So a Phoenix Award is given to emergency responders that show up on an emergency scene, and they are there to lend assistance to a person that is in cardiac arrest. And to clarify that, that means they have no pulse, and they're not breathing, and unresponsive. So without intervention from our crews, which is one of the primary reasons we all are here, they will not survive. So it is the most prestigious, highest honor that we give out here at the Fire Department. And again, without that intervention, those people are clinically dead on scene, and to put it bluntly, they will stay that way without our intervention. So just to talk a little bit about what the Phoenix Award is about. So the first one happened all the way back in April. Sometimes it takes us some time to do follow-ups and find out the outcome of these people. We also only give Phoenix Awards to the responders on patients that we confirm have full recovery. So this is someone that actually walks out of the hospital and have all their faculties and are fully recovered. So that's, takes some time once in a while to find out and make sure that that happens. So on, in April, we responded to a cardiac arrest, and when our crews arrived unseen, it was Engine 22 and Medic 13. When they arrived unseen, the person was found with no pulse. They were cyanotic, in other words, they were blue in the face, which means they have been without oxygen for some time. And we found Lee County ESO unseen administering chest compressions. Again, to back up a little bit on all these presentations that some of you have been out, but one common denominator on almost every single one, in fact, I can't remember one that hasn't had someone from the public or another emergency response agency, for instance, the Sheriff's Department, or a bystander administering chest compressions, is the common denominator. Without that, I don't know that we've had any survivors. So the reason I say that, although our response in emergency care and outstanding patient care is a necessity, people doing chest compressions before we get there is also necessary, which is why we try so hard to educate and train the people in our community to do CPR. No matter how quick, on this call, we got there in four minutes, but by the time someone recognizes it, makes the call, it goes through the dispatch system, and we arrive unseen, most times that is, many times that is too long. We have to have that, again, at least that chest compressions, which moves the oxygenated blood through the body and keeps their brain and their tissues alive until we, until we show up. So that also happened on this. We did invite Lee County ESO, but we, they couldn't make it. But we want to recognize that they did start this, and they are a significant part of the care and the survivability of this person. So when we showed up, our crews took over CPR, they confirmed the no pulse and that the person wasn't breathing. We do that by checking a pulse. We also do that with our cardiac monitor, and we see the rhythm that the person is in, the cardiac rhythm, the electrical activity that's going on. So we confirm all those things. We did three rounds of CPR on this. We did defibrillator shock, we gave the appropriate medications, the patient regained a pulse, blood pressure and vital signs. And they were then transported to Physicians Regional. We had a firefighter ride in the back. One more thing I want to add, we talked about interventions on the scene, and then the person survived. It's not that simple. People don't jump up and wake up and, you know, say thank you and walk away. They get vital signs back. We say that. There's still a long road to recovery, and a lot of that still occurs in the transport. Once we move them into the ambulance, we have to do supportive care all the way to the hospital. Many times, they go back into cardiac arrest. There's things that change in the ambulance that we have to address. So the EMS personnel take care of that all the way, and we usually put, on this case and both of these tonight, we put a firefighter in the back, EMT or paramedic, to assist, because there's a driver, one person in the back. One person in the back of that ambulance is not enough to care for this person. Again, they're not awake and oriented and conscious. They still require a tremendous amount of care all the way to the hospital. All right, at this time, let's do these separate. We'll invite the crews up on Engine 22. I'm going to mention them. They're not all here, but I think they should be recognized. We had Battalion Chief Paramedic Jason Broad, Lieutenant Paramedic Manny Hernandez, firefighter paramedic Calvin Payne. You can come on up, Calvin, and firefighter EMT Jacob Driscoll. You get all the attention, Calvin, because you're the only one here. All right, great job.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about myself.
And from Lee County EMS, we had paramedic Lorenzo Hogans and EMT Jeremy Collins. Okay, so again, owe you. Great job. All right, our second Phoenix Award occurred in September, September 6. It happened at the Winn-Dixie at Springs Plaza, I believe, two and a half minute response time, till we were unseen. We did, we did, by the way, when I say we, I mean all agencies. We talk about EMS, we talk about us. In both these cases, I think we were unseen within 30 seconds of each other. So this is actually and truly a group effort on the way this thing rolls out. Everybody contributes. It is teamwork, so we don't get into who did what, because it takes, if you've ever been to our demonstrations and our expos, there's four, five, six people to accomplish this, this task and to do proper patient care. So this happened at Winn-Dixie. Again, when we came in, there was a bystander administering chest compressions. Again, the common denominator, it is necessary for this to happen. Engine 22's crew confirmed cardiac arrest, took over patient care. Medic 13 arrived shortly after. Both of these were Engine 22. What's going on with that? Huh? That must be, different shifts, though, different crews. We again did three rounds of CPR, three shocks were administered on this, on this cardiac arrest. The shocks were only administered to rhythms that call for a defibrillation. If you have no electrical activity in your heart, again, I know a lot of this, I hate to keep using that reference as TV, but it's not, that you just come in and shock somebody, and they jump up and walk away. So it has to be analyzed. We have to look at the rhythm. There's only a couple that actually get shocked or defibrulated. And both of these, those happened, which is the same thing the AEDs do, which is when we do the AED training, if they happen to be in a public place. The proper medications were administered. And one other thing happened on this call. After the third shock, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Captain Wilson, we used a new technique that we just implemented, when I say we, the county. We're always aggressively looking at things we can change. We're doing research, we collect data. This, this happens at the national level and also on the local level, but we did a Vortec change. After we shock somebody and we don't get the results we want, I believe we added a second set of pads in a different location on this call, and then delivered another shock, which was successful. That's the second time, as far as I know, that we've done this and had positive results. So these things that we change and do and aggressively go after do, do work. So that happened on this one. Patient was transported to Physicians Regional again. One firefighter went and route, and again, a positive outcome. So we have a couple from this crew. If you come up to the front, we had Captain Paramedic Kelly Wilson was on the scene, Lieutenant Paramedic Nick Orechia, firefighter EMT Carrie Coburn, firefighter paramedic Andrew Sertnik, and from Lee County EMS, Medic 13, paramedic Beverly Spates, and EMT Aaron August. If you would come up to
I got a question. What was Captain doing on a truck?
So I'm going to answer the, one of the Commissioners Maturro's question, to embarrass her a little bit. Thank you all very much, by the way, the responders. But Captain Wilson, he said, what was Captain Wilson doing on a truck, fire truck? She was not on a truck. But she, she regularly responds to emergency calls, especially this type of call, because it's a critical call. She trains most of our, our paramedics and EMTs. She's one of the training captains, so she is an expert in these, in these areas. So she goes for two reasons, to render additional care and sometimes just evaluate, but she's always there to help. So in this call, she actually did quite a bit, administered medications, ran the cardiac monitor. She's one of those hands-on people. When she shows up, she just can't keep her hands off things. And I think it does greatly increase to have someone like her unseen. So thank you, Captain.
Nice job. Congratulations. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll take a couple of minute break for anybody that wants to hit the door. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you don't have to. Again, nice job. Get back to, back to the meeting. Next item on the agenda is Commissioners' business. I'll start with Commissioner Murphy this evening.
I have no additional business today.
Commissioner Casilla?
Yes, I, thank you. I received a letter from the Fort Myers Beach Fire Department. I guess we all got it, but I, I got it, and I read it today. Says, Commissioner Casilla, the Fort Myers Beach Fire Department has endorsed and countersigned with the City of Santa Barbara Ruines, "Letter for Clean Water Initiative: Call to Action." And it goes on to say, asking us, without reading the whole letter, if we'd be interested in signing on with it, and the last paragraph says, "We hope you will join us in supporting the Clean Water Initiative to protect our communities and our people. In the near future, we will be sending a template letter for you to utilize in support of these efforts, should you choose." I'm interested in it, but I want to see the template letter before I ask for support.
Yeah, that, that's reasonable. We can wait till the template letter, but I'm assuming that there'll be consensus to support this, because it makes sense. Commissioner Maturro?
Two quick things. Our next episode of the TV show is going to be coming out, and it has to do with hurricanes, and it's basically Nicole's the whole show, and she gives her, her program that she puts on at different communities, and so that's going to be the next show. And I just wanted to let the chief know, if there's anything you need, you have the full resources of the board. If you need anything, well, the chief's on vacation.
All right, thank you.
And I will just reiterate that. And that's all I have. Any old business? I'm not going to call on anybody individually. Anybody got anything?
No, sir.
Okay. New business, the 2018-2019 Budget Transfer, Transfer Number Two. Need a motion for that, or we need to discuss it?
Do you want to explain that, please?
Me too. You want to? No, what it was is we had a, we had three little budget, you know, in a budget, we have each individual accounting thing. We had some overage or some underage in this case. For the first one, the building, repair, and maintenance, that was mostly was some repairs that we did not anticipate, and that, that's why it was so high. The third one was the failing of the propane at Station 3. When we reopened it, there was significant amount of, you know, we, we had budgeted that year for, let's say, $2,000 worth of propane. It came in at $13,000, because the $2,000 is just the normal reoccurring. We had to fill those two 1,000 gallon tanks with all-new propane. So that was that one. And the same thing at Station 5, is that with us adding other vehicles that we're repairing and doing some stuff like that, that where they use the fuel and stuff, plus the city goes there and gets fuel from there. So those were the overages, and that's why.
Thank you.
Motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I will say, the majority of the building, repair, and maintenance, the reason it went over is we had an unexpected, I guess you'd call a sewer leak at Station 5. That came in about $11,000, about $16,000.
Next item, Resolution 19-08-02, amending general employees' retirement system, the addition of the plop-drop option. I don't believe we need to read that into the record. Do I need a motion to approve that?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The EBT job description and pay scale, need a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next, the next item is the auditor selection. We had three of the Commissioners up here, excluding myself, that were assigned to, to do this under a new, new law, selecting auditors. Commissioner Murphy was the chairman of that. I think I will turn that over to you to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, the meeting was held on October 7, 2019. It's called the Audit Evaluation Committee. The state has asked us to go through a procedure, rather than just looking at the costs itself, but to actually do a thorough investigation and look at just who the auditors are and what they have to do. And I'll explain that as I go on here. First of all, my observations are that all bidders were highly qualified. We had three bidders submit all required forms, and each bid was evaluated according to the preset criteria. We were able to adjust that criteria, however, we stayed with this formula, where a firm's expertise was 25 maximum points, their business plan was 25 maximum points, the staff expertise of each firm was 20 maximum points, and their references were 10 maximum points. As an example with references, they may have had great references. We looked at how many references did they have locally, how many references did they have with firms or outfits nearby us that we could call and check on. So there was a pretty good evaluation in many different areas, other than just the price. Waits for cost were not assigned by our committee. By direction of the state, we were asked to leave the cost factors out and evaluate all other factors for the cost to be considered by the board, rather than the evaluation committee. Bonita Springs Fire Control and Rescue staff has got the evaluation sheets from each of our committee members, being Commissioner Casilla and Commissioner, I was also on it, and Jeff was on it. Okay, so Maturro and Murphy. Cost for the bids for three-year contracts, and that's the way we evaluated, so we could compare apples and apples, rather than somebody had a three-year, somebody had a five-year, and extensions. It came out to this. Ashley Brown Associates was able to do it for $116,231, Malden and Jenkins for $104,500, and Brown Associates $91,500. There is a big difference between the three. The consensus of the committee, aside from the cost factors, was Ashley and Brown Associates. We had also taken into consideration not just the bottom dollar amount, but we need to say, what's it going to cost us in staff time to adapt to various different situations, and costs, and evaluations, and computers, and software. So we're going to have to turn this over to the board for a final decision. Our recommendation was Ashley Brown Associates.
If I may?
Sure.
I was, there was, I was the only one that wasn't with Ashley. I was with Grow. And I was, the point difference was one, and rather than, I, Ashley is great. I think they've done a great job in, and taking into consideration the difference in getting a different association and time of the, the staff. I would like to make it unanimous. I'd rather go with Ashley than, so we come out across a unanimous decision.
That sounds good. I was, I agree. That's why you guys were on that committee, so I'll accept the motion to approve that.
Make the motion that we award the contract to Ashley Brown Associates.
I do have one question or a clarification for you, in this case, Chairman of the Audit Selection. If I heard you correctly, that your committee did not, did not take in cost as a factor.
We were instructed not to do that.
Okay, and I agree with that, and I'm just going by, you know, one thing it says in the state statute, if the governing body, if the compensation is not one of the factors established pursuant to Paragraph 3A, and is not used to evaluate it, then the governing body...
body, we can go and negotiate another price. So I will tell you that we will go back, too. Since it wasn't a factor, we will go back and talk to Ashley Brown about maybe lowering their price since they were...
And that was a question that I had earlier, was that I know that we've had a good track record, and you came up with this, you know, from quite a bit of research. I guess with the RFP, we had to have a vote on this tonight. I think the, my suggestion, and I think Assistant Chief DeWitt just hit on it, that I think that we can have a motion with the understanding that we're going to try to negotiate a better price on that.
Get a better price.
I don't know what the option would be. Do we put it in there that we can rethink it, or, you know, I just think that somewhere in there, we should be able to. So we meet the deadline. We meet the state law. I think that maybe...
With all three being qualified, I think it's important for Ashley Brown to give it their best efforts to try to meet other prices. If they're able to get something reasonable, I would suggest we go with them. If they hold on their current price, I think we need to reconsider.
Okay, that's the motion?
That's the motion.
Got a second?
I'll second it.
All with favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much for the work you guys did on that. I know that's like watching paint dry. Assistant Chief DeWitt?
I only have a few things tonight, sir. The one thing, I think we all know about it, but I just wanted to remind everybody about FASD. Starts on, travel day is Wednesday. Class is on Thursday for the CDOs, and then Friday, we have our meeting back here on Friday afternoon. So I just wanted to remind you of that. The other thing I wanted to let you know is our USAR team is doing a mobilization drill. I know that the three of you will not be in town, but on October 16th at Lee County Civic Center, the entire USAR cache will be set up in their, what we call the BOO with the Western shelters and the COTS. And our crews will be setting them up on the 15th on Tuesday, starting tomorrow.
What time?
They're there all day. They're there all day. It's show and tell, basically, from 8 until 5 is show and tell for all the fire chiefs on the 16th. They are starting there tomorrow and starting to build everything, putting everything up like our base of operation inside the civic center.
This isn't something the public's invited to, or no?
Yes, public, public officials, everybody's invited to it. So that's, the 15th, they're setting up. 16th is what we would call our show and tell day for all the dignitaries, all the chiefs, all the county commissioners, anybody in Lee County wanted to go out and see it, and then tearing it back down on the 17th. While they're there, they'll be spending the night, just as if it was a real drill or a real incident. So they'll be there. They'll eat MREs or get food brought in for them. They're locked down there, and they'll be doing drills at night also. The plan right now, Calvin's gone, so I can say it. Hopefully he doesn't see this. It won't be on YouTube before then. Their plan is to do like a, in the middle of the night, have them go out and locate something at three or four different areas within the area of the Bay Shore area, using their GPS and everything. So be a good drill.
I'm sorry, I'm going to miss that.
Me, too.
So, and that's, that's it.
Deputy Chief Scott?
I have nothing.
We have Deputy Chief Madden's report. Thank you. Public comment?
Can I, just ask one question?
Sure.
Just one question. What I'm wondering, Alex Grant, by the way...
Wait, wait till you get up to the microphone for the record.
Sorry, Alex Grant. Question I have is, does, who records the total amount of people that are vested in the retirement plan? Is it Foster and Foster, the actuary, or is it staff? So I need to ask the question of Foster and Foster, then?
It's in the plan doc, it's in the plan document of what a vesting is, which is 10 years as a firefighter.
I mean, because they record, what I, the reason I'm asking the question, I have looked at the amount from the, what is it, the yearly, what, fire reports that you issue every year. So I looked at who were potentially vested, and I don't know, you know, some are less than 10 years, et cetera, et cetera, you know, so not vested. But I had counted about 130 individuals that were certified, probably certified firefighters, that were here from 1984 till 2009, 2010. And I just wondered, that was the question I was trying to get at, who was doing the actual calculation on the vesting, and if that's the people that I need to get in touch with to answer my question?
I can't answer that.
Foster and Foster is the, is the...
It's Foster and Foster.
Foster and Foster is the agent of record.
Okay, so that's, those are the people I need to ask the question. That's all I need to know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the actuary report does have who's vested and who's not. So that numbers, that question's been asked and answered numerous times.
Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks for coming.